All right, we'll get started. It's the March 25th, 2013, special Board of Alderman meeting. It's right around seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Mayor's comments, I don't really have anything. Alderman Rieschel is not here. He is on a golf trip in Mississippi. I asked him what his golf score was today, so I reported to the board. Basically said it wasn't worth reporting, so that's where we're at with that.
Do you have your own way of learning?
There's a long ways to go to do so forth. At any rate, we need, there's one addition to our agenda, and I'll go ahead and just take care of that first. We need, for our planning and zoning committee, we need a board member to be a liaison to that committee. My understanding of the mayor is already on that committee, has voting rights, and there's a liaison who works with that committee from the Board of Alderman, who is on that committee and has voting rights as well. It is Bob Wetson before, and after Bob left the board about a year ago, for some reason, it was an oversight, he was never replaced. So it's up to the board to nominate someone and vote for that person.
I nominate Larry. I nominate this happening.
Well, my thought was, if we can nominate someone not here, and that's kind of their judgment, we're not being here.
That's nominate Wayne.
I second your motion to nominate Wayne.
We already have a motion on.
We've got a motion in a second. We can open it up for discussion. Larry, what do you do on Wednesday night?
I pull fish for Jess, I don't know now.
If he's on fish.
Wednesday night at seven, that board meets. Any more discussion as to the nominee? All right, I'll call for a roll of the vote.
Here.
Jess.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
Larry, congratulations, you have won the right to be liaison for the planning.
Look out, Christie.
We haven't had anything to zone.
All right, citizen comments, I'll open the floor for citizen comments tonight. Anyone have anything? I see nothing. Open sidewalk bids. We have two bids for sidewalks. I enjoy opening bids because I feel like Karnak is magnificent. Anyone remember Karnak? Okay, the first bid we have. Their bid price is $56,000.
What company is that?
Lining, L-I-M-I-N-G, and they're out of Springfield. And I spoke to that gentleman who stopped by the office, he's done quite a bit of, their company's done quite a bit of stuff in Springfield. Total alternative price number one is $58,800. Total alternative price number two is $65,800. Let me go through, explain the alternatives. The total price is just, we're going in and doing just the sidewalk through the city would do all the prep work. Alternative bid one is for the contractor to clean up the sites after the concrete work is completed.
How much was that?
Just come in and pour form and pour, it's $56,000. For them to do, to clean up the sites after it's completed, it's $58,800. And alternate bid two is the turnkey job from tearing out the existing sidewalk and replacing it, and doing all the work in between. And that was $65,800.
Job we did. Is that bond a job?
That's according to our biz techs.
So we bonded, did we?
Yeah.
We did bond it.
Yeah, and we discussed whether or not we needed a, or had a bond, and there's a payment bond, a performance bond. Their bid is 67, 670. Alternative, alternate price one, and that's to do the cleanup afterwards, is 70,970. And total alternative price two is 90,640. And that's Kenny Hall Construction, and they're here in Buffalo.
I'd like to discuss a little bit about the bids. I personally would like to table the bids after the new council is coming in. We're only two weeks away, we're only a month until we have a regular council meeting. For the new council meeting, which is going to be the one that's going to end, we don't know. I really would like to make this a joint project. I personally do not want to make that decision one day or the other, for $65,000 bid. Two week delay, and I'll report the bids in any way, or change the bids, and anybody gets more sleep budget, good for 30 days, and go from there. Talk about it at the next general meeting. It's time to think about the $65,000. Time to really think about what they're bidding on now. I don't know about anybody else, but I didn't see a topic that raised it during the GM press meeting. So I think that we would like to have the opportunity to see what the different parts of the bid is, and then come back. I think that might be a good time to really understand what we're talking about. My suggestion.
I think it's a good one. I'd like maybe those four making a decision on.
I would too. I think that's a very good idea. Then let the council decide, I mean, it's not that difficult. But I wouldn't, you know. I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want to be coming into a project like this. We came in, some of us came in, a big project, without understanding really what we did. Yeah, because I know Christie wasn't here when all that was done, and I wasn't either on local street, and I'd like to know. We voted for it, but I really didn't know, I really didn't know what we was voting for. And for $65,000, $90,000, $25,000 difference, I would like to know what the difference is in between. That's my opinion. We need a motion to table it. Is there a motion?
It's okay.
It's okay. That's fine.
And I calculated, for lining to do, being the lowest bid, at $65,800. Calculated on the number of linear feet, you're looking at $19.11 linear.
How many magnets is that, are they all the same?
Yeah, yeah. The bid requirements were published in Buffalo Replex. I don't know if you guys didn't read it, or didn't get a chance to. Debbie, that was published in Relex.
Well, just the advertisement for bid was published.
Okay, but the specs were here at City Hall.
Right. And that's not as much as I thought it would be, $19,000. We're still talking in generalities. For a complete, we'll have to, I assume if it's a complete job, they purchase the equipment, they pay everything for what's going on, we write them a check.
The only thing we would do is, we'd have to provide a site within five miles to dump the concrete they tear out.
The other side that's over here, the gray one.
Sounds good to me.
That yellow house needs back, all the back porch. That's not a problem, we're fine, we're better off. Let's look at it. I would like, for, Debbie, I'd like to see a copy of the bids, of our specifications.
Yeah, I'll get you a copy of the specs, and do you want a copy of the bids to look at too?
Yes.
I'll have those ready for you tomorrow.
That'd be just fine. We know what we're talking about, and if you're blowing that $10,000, nothing matters out of transportation, and that money is available. So it's just to make sure we get our money's worth. And it would be nice to not worry about it.
Sure.
Thank you for the conference, Mayor.
Next thing on our agenda is the meter reader vehicle. Jennifer's vehicle has seen better days. It's had issues with door closing and the spring involved in there. Been welded a couple times, and last I heard, it's got issues with metal in the, yeah.
Swapped out, didn't it?
Was it completely locked up, won't turn over?
Yeah, it won't turn over at all.
It's swapped out.
So.
It's paid out of the water fund, and we have a emergency, we have to find it somewhere.
I think Debbie has said that the work we need to do on the water tower came in lower than we expected, so that there was money.
Yeah, I mean, as long as the board's okay with purchasing a vehicle, we can proceed with trying to figure out what we want to do.
She really doesn't want to walk.
And right now, they've got her in a truck that the transmission's going out on, and the brakes are sketchy, so.
She needs a good, she's been in it every day.
It gets a lot of wear and tear.
There's a lot of good work for it. She needs a good vehicle driving.
I can't see giving after they pick up, it's got 100,000 miles, why not buy a new one for $18,000?
Can we buy a plain jane Silverado, or a plain jane 150 for pretty close to that money? Automatic, just a plain jane.
I'd say you could. I'd say you can get one of those now. But she wanting a four-wheel drive, what she?
She's wanting a four-wheel drive, and that top price that I have up there is the state bid price on a four-wheel drive truck. Ford F-150 is what has the state low bid.
That's maybe, that's a '06?
No, that's a brand new. That would be a, yeah, the top one is a 2013 model year.
Does the state have that vehicle?
No, it's, the state takes bids on vehicles, and municipalities are allowed to buy vehicles at that price. My suggestion would be that if you guys want to buy a new vehicle, that we put specs together, because the Ford dealership can probably get the same incentive, it's one of the local, I mean, closer to our area dealerships, because Joe Mokken's Ford, which I believe is out of Kansas City or St. Louis, is the one who has the bid. So if we could get somebody local to give it to us for the same price, it would be better.
I personally'd rather get $18,000 or something.
Zero.
13,000 or 78,000. She's pretty rough on it. The stock and junk is pretty rough.
And I mean, that truck we had, we bought it brand new, and it lasted 13 years.
That's, that's pretty good. And it's not too, it wasn't four-wheel drive.
No, it was just a two-wheel drive.
It was a two-wheel drive automatic. Don't you think we ought to have Debbie try to get that together? Well, do we need?
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion on?
Authorizing.
Assuming the first.
Probably either consention or a motion to approve putting together the bid packet to purchase a new vehicle. But you'll still need to vote to purchase the vehicle at a later date.
Why can't we ask Debbie to, we've got a figure here of $18,386. If she can procure us this type of vehicle within these amounts, we go ahead and get it, rather than to wait a month?
Motion.
I'm kind of bousing around, I don't want anything to feel uncomfortable with this. I think it's something we gotta do, that's how I.
Now, I haven't talked to the state bid person, and that does say on there, they'll deliver within 90 to 100 days, 120 days. So they may not have it for us right away, and I don't know if the Ford dealership in Springfield can get it quicker.
Well, if you check there and check Oliver, that's our Ford dealership, we know what it's supposed to cost, and if they can buy it for the same, and we can get it for 18 miles and get it serviced, and get the warranty within 18 miles, I think that's the proper thing for the city.
Yeah, Friendly Ford quoted out at 18,149, and I'm pretty sure they're getting that same incentive from the manufacturer that.
And I put it into a motion authorizing Debbie to make this purchase of this vehicle, if she can do it within the $18,386. I'll set that.
We have a motion in a second, I'll open the floor for discussion. The first thing I'd say is, I know we've talked about having extra vehicles in the past, and that issue's gone up. Why did we do this when we had an extra vehicle available? I know Gus, you have an extra vehicle up the plan, it's the goofy one with the door latch on the outside.
You're still running, though, isn't it?
Somewhere down the line, we've got to start procuring good equipment for the city. I mean, this is, it's actually a deal, it doesn't do anything to keep us in the shop with repair business. Giveers not be cheaper than you. Yeah, giveers could even make us a bid. But what I'm saying is, you know, this vehicle isn't, this belongs to a lady that works for us, awful, awful hard. And I think if anybody needs a good vehicle, a good piece of equipment, it shouldn't be her. She don't care no more. Roger can get along without his, Gus can get around, you don't have to have new equipment, he can get by. And Gus has got good equipment, new to him.
Or the surplus we need to sell, too. The surplus we need to.
Well, we need to gather some of that up on the side on these bases, bring the hashtag, but we need the council and the mayor to get together and see how much we've got to sell, and get rid of it, sure.
Jess, I agree with that sentiment, exactly, that Jennifer needs a vehicle that's reliable, certain. She's out there on the streets every day, coming from station to station. And if anything, she's one of our most visible city employees, and having something decent for her to drive would be preferable. But the issue's been raised in the past, why don't we use some of these older vehicles we have available? And I certainly wanted the board to be conscious of that. Although it's not preferable, we do have available vehicles. More discussion. I see none, I'll call for a vote.
Sorry, I've got a list too. Jess.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
All right, that passed. List station is, Gus.
All right, this is addressing lift station number one, pump number two. I think there should be a sheet that you guys have that shows what the costs are going to be on getting a pump repaired. Yeah, that's it, right there.
Can you pump?
Yes, sir. I sent the pump down, have it looked at. Problem turned out to be that the impeller is cracked, where it fits onto the shaft that goes to the pump. To get the pump repaired, when the impeller cracked, we took the bearings and the seal out. So we're talking a total cost of what you've got right there. The main problem is that the impeller has to come out of California, and we won't get it to the middle of May. So they took the one that was cracked, and they've done the best job they can on it, and they did get it balanced, which surprised me. And we're going to put it in there and let it run until we get that new impeller, and then they'll put it on for free. But they go off with the moving on. But to repair that pump, that's your cost right there.
And this is, in your opinion, what we need to do?
Absolutely.
And this is ordinarily something I would have approved but for the cost, so the cost is at the level of.
That is why it's with discussions.
Certainly.
How much is the new?
Brand new pump, about $18,000.
Getting it repaired will more or less make it sound like new to a lot.
It will be new. I've had new bearings, new seal, new impeller.
Is it a great key, a great shirt pump?
I don't know, Larry, I'll have to check on that.
I'll make a motion that we prove this, repair of the.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a rehearsed second. I'll open the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Jess.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
All right, that motion passed. Generator for the lift station, Jess. And I'll start out by saying, we talked about getting generators before, the lift stations, having a mobile one that would be able to be transferred from one lift station to the other, versus a permanent generator for each lift station. I recall that being before the board at one point in time. Gus, do you have something new for us?
Yes, what you gentlemen have there now is what Lee Garrett put together for us. I asked him to go ahead and draw up what it would take to put a mobile generator that we could use for each lift station site. This is what EPA wants us to do. So what you're looking at there, there's two parts. The most expensive part is to, if we pulled up and ran the entire lift station off the generator. The second part is what I asked him to do, the lower cost. The smaller unit where we could just run one pump. And the reason I asked for that is, we have a 24-hour holding pump on each lift station, except for four, and it's got its own generator. And I do believe that if we just had it where it would just run one pump, that should be sufficient for what we would need. And the plan behind this is, if we ever had a catastrophic event again, like we had with the ice storm, we could go from site to site and pump each station down, and for the mobile unit. That was the plan. And this is the diesel power. Now, the sheet that I handed out to you today is, the plan was, Lamont is going to make it to where we could pull the generator up, take the cord, and run it from the generator to a plug-in on the lift station. The problem with it is, lift station one and six are different than two, three, and seven, so they would have to have their own specialized cord. And the bid that he submitted does not have the price of the cord that would have to run from the generator to the lift station, because we don't know how long it's going to have to be. So what he's got here is what would be his cost to buy the parts and set it up. Two, three, and seven would require a lighter cord, because they don't pull as much amps as one and six do. So what I've given you, gentlemen, now, is, I want to give you a ballpark idea of what it's going to cost you to get that done. It would still have to be bid it out, but this will give you an idea of what it's going to cost for us to get a mobile generator up and going.
We know we need it. The only thing I want is, where's it coming from? Where do we get the money to pay for this?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have, we still have it 100% locked in on that SRF bond issue money. We could use the SRF bond issue money as long as DNR approves the project, which, since EPA's the one mandating this, I can't imagine that DNR wouldn't approve the project. We could use that money that we were going to let Jerry at Olson spend on more rehab stuff, and we could use that money to purchase this generator. We actually purchased the generator that's at the sewer plant right now through our SRF bond money, and it was a pretty simple process. We just had to bid it out, meet our own bidding requirements, and everything went really smooth. Nothing against engineers, but then we didn't have to pay the engineer's cut on any of this.
No engineer, no lawyer pays?
Yeah.
About two.
And I did a little bit of looking today, those, when Jerry was at that last meeting, he talked about how he could spend that extra, he said $80,000, but it was really $50,000. And you guys just kind of, I mean, I think he was just kind of over his, there's just a lot of different ideas. One of them was relining. The reason I'm bringing this up is, we've done three relining projects since 2010, is that right, Gus?
Yes.
And when the engineer's involved in the project, and we take it through DNR, we've paid 5% to 49% more because of the overhead. We've paid for two of the three projects, which they were smaller, out of just city funds, and we tapped into City of Springfield's bid. They did their bid for relining and that kind of work in a cooperative manner, and so we could tap into that without taking our own bids, and without doing any of that. So my recommendation would be that we try to see if we can get some of that DNR money, the bond money, put towards this generator, and cut back that project, because it's still going to do everything that he wanted to do in the scope of that project, it just won't have as much extra stuff.
How much is in that fund, Debbie?
That is where we have the $354,000, I believe.
And how much have we committed to spend on the sewer project?
Well, when he was here at the meeting, he had, he wasn't sure where they were going to use, he said $80,000, but it's really $50,000. So there was $50,000 that they were going to look for more stuff. And the way I understood it is, he was going to take the bids, and Gus, correct me if I'm wrong, he was going to take the bids, and then he was going to add that in later. Am I correct, Gus?
That's right.
So we would just be taking out some of that additional work that he was going to add in.
Plus, we're going to get some money back from the cameras as well. And of course, we're going to need to buy another camera eventually.
Gus, what about the diesel? It's not starting pretty out at Cleveland, do you have enough and everything?
I, Larry, I don't know. I've never messed with a diesel, so.
Gus, you're saying that, I understand that we're still going to take bids on this, this is my idea, we brushed off that one.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that this size generator, 36.3, plus the?
Both of these, or what?
Both of these, 1,700 plus, 547?
Yes, sir. Now, that's not complete, because the cost of the.
So approximately another $2,200. So you're talking a generator in the neighborhood of $40,000.
Yes, sir.
In that neighborhood.
And that's for the small ones, right?
And that's for the small ones.
Gus, what's the advantage of the bigger one, the 45.5?
It'll run everything.
Define everything.
Just like if we had mainline power coming through the lift station, it would run both sides of the pumps.
Okay.
And that's, that was what I asked them to look at, figure it out, running both, and then figure it out to run one. So the better one for us to get is probably the one with 45.5. Kind of the difference between the camera we bought and the camera we need to drive.
Right, so if we, if we go out and ask for bids for both of these generators, for both sides, let's unwind for it, and then come back to this, and let's see where we're at. That's my suggestion. Let's put them out there for bids, and let's bring them back in, and let's look at, and let's make sure that Debbie can kind of guide us along with how much of that money's actually left in that fund. I mean, if she knows that these bids are going to be $50,000, and we've got the $50,000, because that's, that's that real cheap insurance money that we're paying, and the money's just laying there. We're still paying money on insurance, and I haven't touched it. We're still paying money on that insurance and haven't touched it, the principal.
Well, we need to sit down and really have a good budget meeting about what's in our, what's in that and what's in our sewer fund, because we just spent eighteen thousand some odd dollars for a truck that's coming around, fine.
The sewer water department budget needs to be sent out and looked at, it might say. I mean, rest of the time operations, we can survive it. And then we kind of need to know where we're at on the action, because if we don't know exactly what we're going to do with the circuit, it's not all finished. We're still talking about it. And I myself would like to know where we're at with that particular fund.
Jerry Jesky, I met with him a couple weeks ago, and he wants me one more time for the next board meeting. And he's told me that he will have a price ready at the next board meeting, so we'll have an idea of what...
We'll have an idea there. We'll have an idea of how much money we've got to spend, what size generator. We know we got to have one, keep it all on. But I, Andy, why don't you...
Put it up for him.
Put it up for me, answer necessarily where we're at, because I, you know, I prefer to have a bid, a generator, a wiring, all from the same company, so everything matches. Regardless of the size of the generator, I'd rather, if you're going to have to realign and rewire two of the pump stations, you know, those things, those bids, we need to know what that's going to cost us to do. It doesn't have to, that particular doesn't have to bid, this is not the question. I think we just need to know about why, where we're at, what it's going to cost. Debbie will tell us where we're at, and let's see. We've discussed this for years, and we've been fortunate to have had a storm, but we never know.
Do you want me to go ahead and get ahold of DNR and see if we can use those funds if we decide to?
Right. And anywhere between fifty thousand and forty thousand dollars is what we're talking about. How much other can we use?
And this is, a lot of, a lot has been said about the budget and where we're at in deficit spending. That deficit spending that occurred was from our general revenue.
Right.
This is a different fund, actually, it's two different funds. One of it's bond money, and the other is revenues that we have in our sewer fund.
Special funds to our bonds.
So we need to look at those, figure out where we're at, because we just spent eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars without really looking at the budget, considering it. Our sewer in critical need of repair is, we're well on our way to that, but how much more do we need to repair?
We need to look...
And we've got our water towers to consider as well.
We did consider that the bid for the water towers came in less. That's why we felt like we had the money and the budget to purchase the job.
I understand.
It was considered.
I understand. I personally would like to see it. How about city?
Certainly.
You know, even that, where we're at, a couple weeks, where we're at, how much from your, I understand, how much we got for this emergency, where's still going to happen?
And no doubt, that fund will be engaged in deficit spending this year, but we're having to do stuff we haven't done in two years. And I think that's certainly worthy of looking at.
We have to start patching this up again, and then down the line, we're going to have to look at power equipment, we're going to have to, based department, and this.
So...
The priority, our priorities here is to make sure that we buy a sewer and walk. By the later date, we'll look at the base department, department, those things, we have to supply the citizens with those facilities.
Reality is, it's been overlooked for way too long.
To keep from, you know, ten thousand dollars a day, we are, it's not something to look at. We have to have lawyers in business.
I might be available.
Well, I'm not...
I may not have a conflict of interest.
Not of, not of, not of the cheap prices, or...
Fair enough, fair enough. All right, we got the generator taken care of. We have a contract with Great River that's set for approval. King and I went over that. Travis, you've had a chance to go over the contract. Do you want to brief the board on that?
It's a MODOT contract, isn't it?
It is. I reviewed it real quickly against the requirements of MODOT. As I understand it, basically, if the city wanted to change any provision, it would have to go through the okay of MODOT. All of the critical elements are there, and it meets MODOT's requirements, and so my recommendation would be to approve it. There were a couple of small things that I pointed out to Andrew, but...
That use of the function that...
We're going to pay the state agency with MODOT approval, but we start playing with it. We'll be looking at it here from now on, trying to figure what's going on.
That's right.
They've been around wrong, and most of us have, and they're doing what they're doing. And you know what's right, it's what's wrong. It's their money.
Andy, is that, is that... No, it's a business. That it be approved?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Great River Associates.
Is there a second?
Oh, boy, what you guys have said something, they sit there. There you go.
We have a motion, a second, I'll open the floor for discussion.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Which goes with that, down there? What about the can of shit?
Uh, well, that's a collateral issue.
It's going to be pretty long now.
What?
Did they turn down the offer?
It's, it's my understanding, they did not accept it with...
They didn't have to accept it. We had a date on it, remember? And they didn't take action, so, so the bid became... They're just trying to make an extra ten thousand dollars on a piece of property that they can't sell.
Then I think the next step in this procedure is securing easements, and I think we need to go to the county commission and say, your constituents would love for this trail to be put in, and if you would donate the eastern half of that property, and I've already figured out exactly where I put that line, stemming from the east side of that gate, northwesterly bound to the side of the creek there. And I'm sure that the county would want to do that for their constituents, because this affects their constituents as well as it does ours. Any more discussion?
I just had one thing that I wanted to point out to you all. Before, whenever we were talking about this, the discussion about price came up, and, you know, now is the appropriate time to talk about price in a professional engineer's contract. And I thought maybe King could speak to this a little bit about the overhead cost of MODOT.
Excuse me, come sort of. I thought that whenever we approved the MODOT program, in that we approved their schedule of fees, as far as MODOT's concerned, that we really didn't have a say-so in regards to the amount of money that Great River makes, am I right?
They have a maximum allowable...
They have a max, it's not our divisional item, is it?
And then they fix our percent of what they call profit, which is never achieved as profit, it all comes out of your pocket, but they call it profit, so they deduct that out, and they have a page long, you can see it in their document, that we have to submit to their accounting department. Their accounting department runs through all of our books and develops what they believe is our allowable percentages to operate under, and then they give those back to us, and that's what we put back into the contract.
My opinion is, this isn't like the local district contract, I mean, this isn't, these are two different entirely items. The other item was up and down, and we were responsible, we got the bills, and we did it all. Here, this job is, is going to be bid approved by MODOT, we'll pay our percentage of it, and that's the negotiable item, because then that's it, not all.
Pretty much it. What they do is, they take an accounting of King's office, how much his light bill is, how much his employees' cost, his training, and all that, and they figure you're going to make X amount.
Right, so it's not our decision how much he makes in this type of contract. If this was a sewer project that we're asking for, this is just a percentage, am I right? It's a percentage deal.
That's not going to lie. I mean, I don't want to speak out of school here, but it's, it's actual cost plus a fixed fee.
Right.
I mean, isn't that correct, King?
That's, they would love to tell you that that's what it is, but that fixed fee that they call profit, you can never achieve that as... Because a normal person sitting here that doesn't deal with this hears the word profit and says, you put that much money in your pocket and walk away happy, because all your expenses were paid for, and then you got profit. Right? That's what's left when everything's paid for. What's left in your hand is profit. They determine that profit for you in a percentage. Now, they don't ask us what it costs to operate, they determine it for us, and then that's what gets put in that contract under that fixed fee item, is a straight multiplication of the percentage that they allow us to put in there. Is it what we would normally put in there? Not all, but it is what it takes to fill out their paperwork when you get through the process. It's, it's set at, when you put your application in, it was set at the maximum allowable fee for, for the design and construction of ten percent, fifteen percent, for those two phases. You all want to ask us to do it for less, you certainly can.
Is this an eighty-twenty situation?
It is.
So every twenty percent we save, we save the state eighty, it's still going to cost us twenty. And I myself would know, I'll argue with you about a lot of things, but when it comes to this, I don't have a clue what is due. I mean, that's not my job. This is a MODOT deal, it's, it's their baby. They're giving us the money, we're going to pay a percentage of it, and we're going to cut the ribbon when it's all done in three years, and write them a check for what our share is going to be, and if we do good management with our money, between now and the next three years, we'll have the money to pay. I don't see a lot of discussion on the items.
Hey, dude, your costs are fairly well set, both... Both beside the engineering portion and the construction portion. They're already defined and set and put into both the premiums.
They're going to say MODOT's going to look at your fees a lot after that.
Right.
No, they already have. They already have.
Whether they're going to as a presented to...
Right, they'll, they have already ones, and they'll look at them and give them whenever in the contract.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote, Debbie.
Christie.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jen, uh, sorry, Jess.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
All right, that passed. And last thing on our agenda is citizen comments.
How about some general information?
Sure.
Gus, just for myself, and I'm sure that through the council room, where are we at with our sewer project right now? As far as, so, repairing any of the lines that they have seen broke, are we back on schedule?
Yes, sir. He's going to get that set together and bid back, and get it ready to be bided back.
So we've done, so the boys that we gave twelve, fourteen thousand dollars for to televise the sewer lines, that's all done, and they're through, and we're back to...
Yes, sir.
And no surprises, as far as we know.
Uh, not unless we find something new. There, we'll, we'll need more cameras.
There was something else.
Any citizen comments from citizens who are in our elected district?
Are running for office.
Are running for... That's what the streets are for, Gus.
When are we going to have, when are they going to work on the water tower?
That's a good question. I don't know. We need to, we've approved the lowest bid, haven't we?
Yeah, they, and the contract then has been signed, I've received it back from them. They're supposed to get with Gus regarding the timetable of, have you heard from them yet, Gus?
No, I haven't. I haven't heard.
Why don't you come in tomorrow and get their phone number and contact information so that you can touch base with them?
Okay. Anything else? I just thought of something briefly. How many thought that the Y taking over the pool was going to save us money?
No.
Okay. I thought that was the consensus of, of one of them.
The consensus was, I think, the leverage is money. We didn't need, we had water. I got what I understand, and we started talking about this, this was just one problem that Debbie didn't have to worry about, we didn't have to worry about the nickel and dime operation down there, hiring and firing somebody and making everybody, people mad because we're firing, and I thought we got the consensus what we were wanting.
It's about the electric, that's what it was, but then...
Yeah, yeah. Well, my, my understanding, based on prior meetings, was that one of the goals of the Y taking over the pool is saving cities money and headache.
I thought it was all headache. We did, we do, that when we compensated Y with our losses, that we were just eliminating a headache or a problem that we really didn't need. We didn't have, we don't have staff to do it.
What do we...
We don't have the staff to run the pool.
Well, we, we hire people every year, so you know, for...
We hire, and we hire, and we take all the heat and all the problems, because it's not run right, and it's not clean right. Debbie's got all she can do to do the paperwork, and she, in my opinion, same way with park work, I'm wanting them to have it, because I don't think we all be running baseball games and soccer games. I think that that, in a small town like ours is, we're not metropolitan area where all these things can be committed out, and a lot of people here, we have to do it, see if that, that's one reason I'm also wanting to park it, we know it's not, it's just going to, it's going to be in the hands of professional people.
And the Y is one of, I've been told is one of the top six employers in Buffalo, so helping create jobs.
You know, we're, you know, outside, and they're, they're making it, they make it, heat comes down, it's theirs, not ours. And I think, I think as far as the park, the rest of it, I'm saying, it's just that I think it's in a professional way. They are professionals in this type of business, and they should be a lot of the ones, and that's, we're in the, we are in the business of providing services to the community, not sports complexes.
I like the motion major.
Hold on, I just wanted to... I'm sorry?
I throw a snap. I'm ready to not have a fight.
No, it's not a fight, I'm trying to provide information. I'll, I'll keep my information to myself. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.